Okay, it is a little after seven and I will call this session of the City of McMinnville City Council to order. And Alan, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alan. Our first item on the agenda this evening is going to be our public comments section and we're going to change this a little bit, but we'll announce that any interested audience members invited to provide comments this evening. Anyone that wants to speak on short-term rental lodging ordinance, RV and abandoned vehicle ordinance, or the plastic bag ordinance, please hold your comments until we bring that up. We'll have you include that into the dialogue that we will have with the council. Any other topic, then we'll have you come up during this piece. And items that we're not able to address would be matters of litigation, quasi judicial land use matter, or matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. And we'll limit the comments to three minutes per person. So again, anyone that would have comments this evening on anything that we had possibly on the agenda during our work sessions. So Mark, I know you want to address annexation. But if you're wanting to to comment on the short-term rental lodging ordinance, RV and abandoned vehicle ordinance, or the plastic bag ordinance, please hold your comments and we will have you come up after we have our presentation by staff and then we'll hear your comments and then we'll have discussion. So I have in front of me a number of you that want to talk on the RV parking and so I'll I will call on you during the the time that we talk about that. But Mark Davis would like to talk about annexations. So Mark, if you'd come up.
Thank you, Mayor Hill, members of the council, Mark Davis, 652 Southeast Washington Street. I listened to your discussion of the annexation ordinance and I'd like to to add my perspective to that discussion. I was one of the citizens 22 years ago who gathered signatures to allow that vote, that the citizens approved our initiative petition to allow the citizens to vote on annexations. I thought that was necessary at that time. I was disappointed when the legislature a couple of years ago took away that right. I don't but that's water over the bridge or under the bridge, depending on how you view it. So but I would like to comment on the process that was discussed this evening. The the I'm okay with the pre-annexation agreement. I thought that was seemed like a reasonable way to do it. I was a bit troubled by the planning director's comment that public comments would come, you know, when we got to the planning commission. I mean, I think that Goal One of the land use process is citizen involvement and I think citizens should be involved from the very start, right in that those while you're talking to the developers about what's going to happen as opposed to when we get to the point of all of this is you've worked it all out and then, you know, we have a chance to object. I mean, that's the kind of attitude back in the mid 90s that led to the vote on annexation ordinance in the first place in which a lot of things seemed to be decided before we got to a public hearing and the public hearings seemed to be pro forma. I'm not saying that's what, you know, the city would do and I know the the planning director has a real commitment to Goal One. But I just think that there ought to be some, you know, forum or someplace where citizens can give a little input early on in the process and not just wait till, you know, we're three quarters of the way down the road and, you know, raising some objection that's really going to derail the process. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I have, is it Mark Rich? Welcome.
Thank you very much. I'm a citizen. I live here in McMinnville, Oregon, 1427 Northwest Fifth Street. I've been in here before. I've discussed many things from alcohol bans to helping the homeless. Tonight on my agenda, what I'm going to address the council with is I set a copy of this in the City Hall's hands today. And this is calling out for a Freedom of Information Act on the information of the city building of the community center being rented out on a closed day of Sundays to a church and congregation. Now that city building is supposed to be closed on Sunday. It's not supposed to be taking churches churches money to be meeting. There are places they can buy another kingdom hall like the Mormons or move on and rent a space somewhere other than the city. There's a separation of church and state. On the second page of this, I also addressed the McMinnville City School District Number 40. They do the same thing with the Sue Buell Public School on Sundays. They rent out a public school for a church service and congregation. Now, I believe that we are one nation under God, but I do believe that we are separated by our constitution that says separates the church and state. That means money, that means influence, that means rules. But I said there's finances being crossed over the table. And the third thing I'd like to address is a comment that Chief Matt Scales, City Chief Police, said on February 21st. When the City Council addressed the homeless or the people in the campers, do some of these people have a place to go? And the words out of Chief Scales' mouth was, yes, I went out Three Mile Lane and there are spaces for some of these people. I followed up the next day and there is absolutely zero. There is a one-year waiting list. So at this present time, I'm going to ask my City Council as a concerned citizen, is it right to have a chief of police on there lying to your agenda? That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, I do have a number of individuals that would like to talk on items that will be on the agenda, but I will call for anyone that would like to speak to the council on items that are not going to be on our agenda this evening. Jared?
Good evening, folks. Hi, my name is Jared Miller. I live at 947 Southeast Fourth Street. Good evening to everyone. How are you all doing tonight?
Great.
I'm not going to talk about anything on the agenda, but I would like to just talk about the agenda in general. I've spent some time here looking over some notes from your previous minutes. There's there was some misinterpretation long ago that I was learning about some of the Roberts Rules and the way that the the standard of, you know, meet and greet when it comes to politics. And so I got involved with some other range of meetings that also had the same the same statute. I mean, it's kind of common that you guys follow Roberts Rules. It's just something we've all learned. I learned a lot of that in in eighth grade. Most of that stuff that I read was being involved with the city just for like a ride along. So I learned a lot about that stuff back in, you know, in middle school. And I took a lot of that to heart after 10 or 12 years later where I see, you know, the same format in every city, every county. And I followed that in the county as well. There's a lot of overlap. And I'm, there's discussions that I see that happen in the county that are also happening here. And I see both of those just by attending. And I know that's only half the battle, but words, you know, there's so many words to different job positions, different ways that we all come across, slang, logo, anything that you want to use. We might not even speak a regular language together, but as long as there's a common word, typically we can find a ground arrangement. Well, a lot of these packets, like today, I printed out your guys' packet and took a look. The previous minutes discussed the April or the April 3rd meeting and also the meeting that occurred with the Police Department for your guys' integration for 2020 and and beyond. And you guys talked about these other these other meetings that you mentioned words like wayfinding, where I've I've used that word in many places and to wayfind means to know where you are and where you are going. They made a movie called Moana for children and they used the word wayfinding quite a bit. I know you're branching out and you're seeking assistance from people who are professional wayfinders. But growing up, I mean, anyone who's on the street is what I would consider a wayfinder because they have to make do with what the street provides. And so, I mean, I know you guys are looking for this advanced skill, you guys, between the two, all of you, I mean, there's over well, between all of your staff, there's over 200 years of experience. I know you guys have discussed your 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 personal job skills and each one of you guys has a cog in the wheel when it comes to the city. And I'm, you know, not talking about anything. I I would like to be here as a citizen and discuss each ordinance, which would be me writing out in this particular case of how you do it, writing out a public comment for each individual ordinance. Because that's what I will do.
Okay, three minutes are up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jared.
Yeah.
It's not going to stop on me. Okay, we are to a point in our discussion tonight where we have a proclamation and I would like to have Drew Anderson and Russell Mark from Juliet's House come up and we have a we have a proclamation this evening that I would like to read. Come over here. Whereas the Center for Disease Control and Prevention estimates that one in four children will suffer significant abuse before the age of 18 and annually over 70 Oregonian children are reported to the Department of Health Services of having been abused or neglected with over 10,400 child abuse victims confirmed in 2006 alone. And whereas a physical, emotional and financial impact of abuse and neglect falls most heavily on the children of all ages and abilities who come from all economic, racial, social backgrounds and these crimes affect many more family members, families, neighbors, educators, family coworkers. And whereas children victims who feel understood and supported are more likely to disclose their victim and they victim nation seek services for finding healing and participating in the judicial process. And whereas providing victims and families with knowledge of their rights and available services further strengthens their ability to recover by restoring a sense of self-empowerment. And whereas traumatic informed response to victims promotes healing and fosters strength in survivors. And whereas we celebrate those who provide help and support to children who are victims of violent sexual abuse and neglect and many other life-altering crimes and their commitment to respect and enforce victims' rights and to address their needs and supporting of healing. And whereas the National Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month, which is April 2018, provides an opportunity to commit our community to ensuring that all victims of child abuse are afforded their rights. And whereas McMinnville is dedicated to strengthening child victims and non-offending families in the aftermath of crime, building resilience in communities and victim responders and working for justice for all victims and survivors. And now here for now, therefore, I Scott A. Hill, Mayor of the City of McMinnville, do proclaim April 2018 as Child National Child Abuse Prevention Month and reaffirm the City of McMinnville's commitment to creating a victim service a service and judicial criminal justice response that all assist all victims of crimes during Crime Victims Rights Week and throughout the year and to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice and peace. And in witness thereof, I hereby forset my hand and cause the official seal of the City of McMinnville to be affixed on this, the 10th day of April 2018. Signed, Scott A. Hill. And we have we have one of the many providers in this community, the Juliet's House and and Russell is here and and I had an opportunity to walk through their facility earlier in the month and, you know, I just echo the words that have been said. So congratulations. Take that back to the staff. Take it back to your board and those that are working so diligently in helping those that are victims of abuse and crime.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to our consent agenda this evening. On our consent agenda, we have for consideration the minutes of our January 23rd, 2008 dinner and regular council meeting and our work session of April 3rd, which was a strategic planning stakeholder charrette. We have consideration a request of off-premise with fuel pumps, an OLCC license from ARS Frisco LLC DBA Porters 51 located at 1220 Northeast Lafayette Avenue. We have consideration for consideration a request from the Drath Wine LLC Winery OLCC license from Drath Winery LLC located at 818 Southeast First Street. We have a resolution Number 201816, a resolution providing for the approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of McMinnville, Yamhill County for equitable sharing of dog control licensing revenue. Is there any councillor that would request any item to be taken off of our consent agenda this evening? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. And a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Councillor Menke and seconded by Councillor Drapkin. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed by saying nay? The consent agenda passes unanimously. That takes us to our part in the agenda this evening of presentations and Carl Peters of Recology is here to present his report of recology and recycling. So Carl, welcome. It's good to see you.
Mayor, council, staff. Staff's everywhere. We do appreciate your time and I will do my best to be informative and yeah.
I will do my best to be brief and informative all at the same time. Do I advance this myself? Ah, perfect. Why are we here today? First thing, I want to introduce you to our new Way Zero Specialist and I'll defer when I to that until I get to that moment. I did want to also discuss the landfill site. Yes. It's okay. Even closer. How about right there? It's rather intimidating now, but let me turn it like that. Okay. One of the things I realized here as I was sitting in the audience looking at this this particular site with a landfill site change, that I didn't include something to just give an update on the transfer station. So I did want to at least share real briefly before I move on that the transfer station did open up January 1. It is open and running. Few kinks still that we need to kind of work out in the process and how it all runs, but it is going well. And January through March, we moved almost, in fact, just over 5,400 tons through the transfer station. So again, it's running well. We've been pretty pleased. The kinks are simple things like, you know, you don't realize how smooth concrete is till you put a little bit of trash on it. And so it's quite the skating expedition until it gets a little bit of wear into it. But I mean, if that's the biggest challenge we have, things are going great out there. So we're very pleased with that. And I and I think long as I'm talking about that, one of the other things that I did do was to make sure I sent a notice to Jeff Towery that we had when we came here originally, we had a hard time trying to secure good competitive numbers as we were looking for the alternative disposal sites. And we've been able to secure some favorable disposal costs from the Coffin Buttes landfill down in Benton County. And even though it's a rate that's 20.4% higher than what we're currently paying, we feel pretty comfortable that we're going to be able to offset those those fees with transportation savings. As I look at it, I say to myself, well, you know, as long as that pricing remains there, it makes sense. So we look forward to reporting back to you, is it working out well? Is it something that's going to remain and be beneficial to the City of McMinnville? We believe strongly that it will be and I will make it a point to keep the city manager apprised of how that's going. But we see it as in our in in the city's best interest for us to always be looking and always be watching for the best opportunities out there. And the opportunity to not have to move material so far is something that was attractive to us. And so we're going to see if we can make this work even with that additional expense. But so I can get kind of back on topic though, the the other reasons to speak with you today is to talk about recycling fact and fiction. There's a lot of stuff in the news that you may hear about and maybe some recycling changes that are coming up that I think it's important that we talk to the City Council about. So I think the first thing that I'd like to do is have somebody join me up here so I can introduce her. One of the one of the things that, you know, I realized when I came up here, especially with the changes we were making, that we needed to do even more than we were doing to work with the community, to educate and do a better job of saying, here's how we do our job better. Here's how we move towards Way Zero. Here's how we recycle better. Here's how we do all these things better. And we still have Scott Law around who many of you may may know and he's still doing a fantastic job. But we needed to have somebody that could spend more time and actually full-time working here with everybody in the city. So I'm very happy to introduce our new Way Zero Specialist for McMinnville, Leslie Lanzar.
Hi, thank you so much. Can you hear me? Everything okay? Yeah, so I'm the new Way Zero Specialist or Scott Law would like to introduce me as Scott Law 2.0. But I'm very happy to thank you Recology and the city to allow me to be your Way Zero Specialist. What I'm here to do is educational outreach to the community. That includes the schools, businesses, residents. Currently, so I I just began the position end of January, so I've only been in this position for a short while. And already I've been invited by Kids on the Block to attend each of the elementary schools in McMinnville to give recycle presentations. And I've had a lot of residents reach out to me. One thing that I am completely impressed with with McMinnville is I've had so many businesses, managers or owners actually call me and or email and say, you know, I've heard what's going on. I I really want to know how do I recycle? I want to do what's right. And it's just, it's amazing how many people in the community are just so positive and wanting to do what's best for the environment. So thank you and I'm going to continue with my educational outreach.
Thank you. So the the real thing that made brought me to want to be here today with you is to talk about recycling. There's been just so much stories out there with people thinking that recycling is just being thrown away as trash because there's so many challenges getting material moved that recycling routes are being pulled off the off the streets. That's actually happened in Southern Oregon. The curbside recycle routes were actually pulled off the street and they didn't run curbside recycling. You may see a lot of stories out there about rates and surcharges, surcharges escalating through Oregon. That one's actually true from many, many, many spots, Bend, Ashland, Talent, Albany just announced, Washington County, Metro, Gresham, that's that's just to name a few that have looked at some of the challenges in the recycling markets, which we'll talk about here shortly. And a lot of them are passing $2 to $3 a month surcharges for residences and anywhere from 10 to 15% surcharges for the commercial businesses. But what we're happy to say about here in McMinnville, we are still recycling. There is nothing being thrown away. We continue to work with processors that are recycling material that we bring to them. And so those routes are still on the street doing their job. And so I would want to at least assure the City Council and any residents that hear me speaking to this, that's still happening and we're still doing our job. The thing that everybody's talking about as they hear folks saying, well, what's going on is this Chinese national sword. And on July 18th, China filed a notice with the World Trade Organization saying that honestly, there's just 24 different materials they were no longer going to recycle. And the biggest reason they gave for that that they presented was that they were tired of receiving the world's garbage. And that's because there are a lot of companies that didn't do a great job cleaning up the recycling before they shipped it. Some companies, honestly, none that I have ever been around and none of the reputable companies around here. But a lot of companies bury garbage inside those bales and ship them over. And that's something that the Chinese government, I think especially when you saw us pull out of the Paris Accords, they really said, well, we want to step up and the first thing we need to do is have our own internal programs here in China. We need to quit bringing stuff in. We have all this material here ourselves. Let's get our own programs going. The second thing they said is we're tired of getting all this garbage from around the world. It's not just the US. I want to make sure I'm very clear about that. So the three major components of this national sword that you hear is a ban on all unsorted mixed paper and mixed plastics. The reason that's such a big deal is that pretty much everything that is being generated by curbside programs is that unsorted mixed paper. And they've said, we don't want it anymore. Again, we're talking about a country that was taking 50, probably around 50, 60 million tons a year of recycling that sits now going, yeah, maybe we don't want that anymore. They set up a strict half a percent contamination limit on imported loads. So what's happening, a lot of recyclers, ourselves included, you can think you've got that cleanest load going over. But if they pop a bale open and see anything in there, they can just go and reject it. And when they reject it, you're fined and then you've got to ship it somewhere else. And it's been going across the sea for a while. And then one of the other things they did internally in China was they suspended all new license approvals. And far as I understand now, they're just doing those quarterly. So basically every three months, you really know how much can you actually ship. All the folks over in China don't actually know how much they can accept. So all of those things is really contributing to a major, major slowdown. And it's quite a lot of chaos and, you know, we we just had to include this slide because this gentleman is the Minister of Environmental Protection for China. And he said, you know, these policies are going to be implemented in a short period and it may result in chaos in society. And in our world, that is exactly what it has done. And how does that impact Oregon? Well, the the first thing is you have lower revenues due to depressed commodity pricing. Well, you know, China is probably, like I said, taking down 20% of what they used to receive. So everybody else is going, well, boy, you must need us, so we're going to lower that pricing because the demand is so great. And that makes sense. That's the economy of it. That's how it works. And so that's a challenge because the market then gets flooded. You've got to think about all these people that have all this backed up material that China's not taking, so it's flooding out to Indonesia, to Thailand, to all these different places. different places. Recology is fortunate because we started expanding our markets a while back. So we're kind of in a much better position. And most of the recyclers that we work with have recognized this fact that they don't want to approach their, their business model is that we don't do business with China anymore because it's too undependable. I guess for lack of a better word, it's just undependable. Higher processing costs, this is a tough one. It used to be that, you know, 100 tons would come in, you run it up the belt, and you know, you pick some of the stuff off, you do some optical sorting, a bunch of pneumatics and things that they do, and drops off the end, you bend, or off the end, you bail it and you ship it. Well, now, because of that half a percent requirement, they've slowed the speed down to one-fourth of what it used to be. They doubled the number of people they have on the belts to sort more material out. And a lot of folks are spending one and a half, two and a half, up to $4 million buying more mechanical sorting technology to try to extract those contaminants out. Higher transportation costs. As I said, you know, what's happening is that ships are going to China, then they go other places. And just the sheer cost of shipping and the demand for shipping and the limited capacity for shipping, both on the roads and shipping, is just driving costs up. The higher capital costs, again, the equipment that I talked about, that folks are having to spend that money. Most of these orders that we were processors we work with came to us and said, we want to make sure that your communities are still going to be recycling because we're going to spend big money, but we want to make sure your stuff's still going to show up. And those are the kind of folks that we like to align ourselves with because we said, yeah, we're open for business and we're going to keep showing up. Again, the availability of outlets, we've talked about it. Stockpiling, well, again, used to be that 100 tons would come up the belt, right, and drop off, and you ship off 100 tons. But now 100 tons is still coming in, but only 20 tons is leaving. So as you could imagine, it begins backed up and backed up. So stockpiling continues to be a challenge. But development of new markets is going to happen, and you know, necessity is a mother of invention, I think they usually say. And I probably go home every day trying to figure out, okay, what can I do with all this mixed paper? How can I open a business here in McMinnville and do good things with it? And I think we're going to see a lot of that continue to happen. Everybody just wanted to show you, I mean, these are, you know, like Far West fibers, just so you some of the plastics. I mean, they probably have three to four times that amount by now backed up that they just, they can't, can't ship out. One of the things that we do want to make sure, and that we would show you folks, is that, you know, we talk about what's happened with recycling. Some places down in Southern Oregon, they cut back to four items. And, you know, I've said this before, and I'll say it again, that I think we've accomplished far too much in terms of recycling to say, well, just because now it's become inconvenient, let's not do it anymore. I don't think that makes any sense. I think socially, it carries too much value, and I still believe economically, it carries a value, and we don't want to go backwards just because it's a bit inconvenient. If you look at what we now accept in recycling, or what's generally acceptable, I should say, in recycling, as you look at this list, it's probably not too different than anything you've ever seen. And we're actually very proud of that. You know, it's not a list of four items. We recognize that there are some tremendous costs that are, that we're exposed to, to be able to do this. But then that's why you guys have us here, to keep doing those kind of things, and to not do necessarily what's convenient. We used to receive payment for recycling, and that's certainly not the case now. It is actually cheaper to take recycling to a landfill than it is to process it. And that's a pretty darn crazy situation to be in, and it could very well be the new normal. But, but we're not going to do that, thank you. We're not going to do that, and we also think maybe still it's a bit too early to just go running for the hills. It just doesn't make any sense at this point. And it does require us to probably begin doing some education about things that are not most likely going to be allowed in recycling anymore. And I want to say and make sure, clear that we have not started promoting this change yet. We are going to start promoting this, these changes. And because some of the challenges are, and these are lists of things that honestly, they just don't want to see in the recycling anymore. Aseptic packaging and all milk, so if you think about it, you know, how many schools? That's the first thing that, that, you know, that you do when you go to a school, okay, take your milk cartons, throw them in the recycling. You know, they don't, they don't want those anymore. The juice boxes, no, they don't want that. The lining is too difficult to process. So milk, juice, soup, or similar boxes or cartons, you know, ones with the plastic waxy film to them. They don't want shredded paper in the curbside. Certainly scrap metal, just because of the processing and the hammer mills and things they use to separate them, it causes too many problems. One of the bigger challenges, plastics, plastic tubs, salsa margin, cottage cheese, hummus, yogurt cups, planting our nursery pots, five gallon buckets. Those are things that, quite honestly, if you go home today and look at your recycling cart and look at the sticker on it, all those items are on it. And the truth is, they don't want them anymore. And we will begin doing things to start getting that message out there. But it's not going to sink the ship. But one thing that we don't have on there, and I kind of scratched my head and said, maybe we should have put it on there, is no trash. Don't put trash in there. And you'd be shocked that I have to say that, and you'd be shocked that we should put that on there. And the real lesson in all of this is that it's become, well, I think, I don't, and we were talking about it before it started, that there's confusion that happens out there, you know, and it's, what we talked about earlier, it's wishful, wishful recycling plus confusion equals contamination, which is the big problem that everybody's having, and that we're going to have to figure out. How do we get folks educated, get them on board? Don't put trash in there. Clean things out before you put it in there. Let's get these things done so we can make sure that we can continue to have an outlet for all these materials.
And if I could add something briefly, just one thing I'm telling the students and also the businesses, when in doubt, throw it out. Or if you still are wondering, feel free to call me, Leslie Lanzar, Way Zero Specialist. That's what I'm here for. More than happy to help you out.
One of the, so what we're going to continue to do is our, our sales and marketing teams, they're continuing to look for expanded markets. There's so many places in Canada that people are still really, they're untapped. Our community staff, again, we're going to be reminding folks about sorting requirements, do billing inserts, social media updates, and any sort of media channels, we can start getting that information out about the changes that are coming. And drivers working really hard with us, and Leslie will probably be driving them crazy over the next couple of months, getting them up to speed, what, how they can help us and help the city. Make sure, you know, your bag ban, I know you're going to talk about later, good stuff. That's the kind of things that these facilities, it is one of the most problematic things at a recycling center is a plastic bag. And again, doing education outreach, that is just such a huge important part of what we want to do here, and why we're so fortunate to have Leslie on board with us, to work with the city, to make sure that we're doing all the things that we need to do. And we would leave you with, you know, one of Leslie's favorite slides, right, about the things that we were always supposed to do. You know, reduce, don't be disposable, receive bills and mail electronically. Is my wife sitting there, back there looking at me because I'm working on her on that one? Say no to plastic, is she still smiling? I hope so. Say no to plastic bags, right, which you've done, which we so appreciate. Repair broken goods before replacing them. Rent, share, purchase secondhand, or donate is just a wonderful thing to do, whether it's food or otherwise, they're just great things, there's so many people in need, and we always want to be a part of that whenever it's possible.
Carl and Leslie, thank you. Let's see if we have any questions from the council. Go ahead, Adam.
I'd just like to say thanks for the presentation. It was informative, and on that non-allowed slide, those were all things I had been taught to recycle as a kid, so on my part, your recycling just got a little cleaner.
Well, we will do our best, and you know, as, you know, quite honestly, as everybody at work says, and as my wife Katrina keeps saying, she goes, well, I just figured that out. Us too. So, thank you, and I'll probably back in a couple of months, give you another update and let you know how it's going.
I have a question for Leslie, is a part of your communication, are we going to replace the acceptable items that are on the co-mingle red can on the top? Are we going to do something that way, or just go through mailing? How will we communicate what's acceptable?
Yeah, so we're, different avenues. So the one is, we are, it's on our internet. We are, I'm going to the different businesses, handing them out. We're also going to mail them to the residents. And also, I'm going to be at most of the events, Turkey Rama, you name it, you'll most likely see me there. I'm going to have a booth, reaching out, you know, trying to let everyone know, the newspaper. So we're just, we're going to try to be everywhere.
Far as the stickers, we're going to give it a run. It's, you have, you have a window of time, of weather, where you can get those things on there, and they'll set up and stay. But yeah, it's confusing, and again, that's just going to lead to contamination, so we'll keep working on that.
Go ahead, Wendy.
Thank you for the presentation and welcome. I'm glad that you're here. That's, that's really important, the education part. You taught me something tonight. I'm still recycling some of those things. I had a question about how long ago these changes happened, and, and is it, have you just started trying to educate about it?
Yeah, we truly actually, so I met with all the processors that we use, and really for the residential, which is the big piece here that we're talking about. What they said to me was this, they go, don't panic or worry yet. They said, all the material we're getting from all our other communities are terrible compared to yours, but right now we're having to mix them. He goes, so, he goes, you can begin that education process, because you know, there's other communities that are falling behind and aren't as proactive as us. And the truth is, at the end of the day, we're constantly looking for other opportunities to move that material, but the folks we use now, they are, honestly, they're the best. And they're the ones that, you know, I want to be able to sit in front of you when I say, we have not, we are not throwing recycling away. Trust me, before I say that, I'm meeting with them, you're not throwing it away, are you? Like, no, no. A lot of these companies, you'll hear them apply for, they'll call it concurrence. That's the DEQ's authorization. Well, correction, DEQ wouldn't want me to say they authorize this. They will concur that the material's probably going to have to be disposed. When stuff stockpiles for so long, and it gets rained on, it actually loses market value. And at some point, it might have to be thrown away. But you know, we're, again, we feel very fortunate to align ourselves with partners that don't want to throw this stuff away, and we'll begin rolling this out. Honestly, I think we actually threw it on the, on our social media site, and we were actually, didn't mean to. Somebody was just excited and put it out there. I was like, ah, go ahead and leave it out there, might as well let people start seeing it. I think you'll see us ramp up over the next three months. Short answer.
And with that, again, I just started last week meeting Southern McMinnville School District with the Kids on the Block, the after-school program. I'm meeting each elementary school on Wednesdays. And so if you have any kids in school, I'm just giving you a heads up, they will most likely come home and they will be teaching you about what is and is not recyclable. I, I am just so impressed with these kids.
That's the way it usually happens.
Yeah, it's great.
They get it first. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Carl and Leslie. Appreciate you coming in.
Appreciate your time.
Our, our next item is a presentation on the bypass Phase 2 statement of support, and in your packet, you're going to see a letter that has come from the Yamhill County Parkway Committee. That committee is made up of representatives from each community in Yamhill County, including the Consolidated Tribe of Grand Ron. We have a number of businesses that are represented in there, and then the chair is Dave Hoggleberg. Both myself and Council President Manke sit on that committee, and we've been represented on that committee for many, many years. Let me just summarize, well, let me, let me share with you the intent of what this letter is. It's a statement of support of the entities within Yamhill County that are going to be, that are affected by the bypass. And primarily, what it does is summarize our, our history, but the bottom line is, we feel it is necessary as the bypass committee to sign a letter of support moving into Phase 2. You're going to see that there's no dollars associated with it at this particular time, but that we are affirming our continued support for construction of Phase 2 and the ultimate completion of the bypass. Now, the first part of this talks about the bypass, when in its entirety is looking at, starting at Rex Hill and going to Highway 219, in which it connects with Phase 1, going through Dundee. So Dundee, the piece that's completed right now is Phase 1. Phase 2 again is from 219 up to Rex Hill, and Phase 3 will connect to Highway, they're calling it 18, and going down to Dayton. We have already, through the legislative process of 2017, been earmarked 22 million for preparation of Phase 2. We had a savings of 18 million from Phase 1 that's been brought over to Phase 2, so that gives us approximately $38 million. And what we need to do at this particular time is, and we've changed the language in the legislature, that allows us to take those monies to get us to being shovel-ready. And that gives us a lot more variability in what we need to do. But that 38 million compared to about 90 million, which will take us to get to being shovel-ready, there's a gap. And so we're working with the state and other entities to be able to, to get to that point. But we, we feel it is necessary to have this statement of support to move forward, to share with the legislature and those involved at ODOT, that we're committed to moving forward in this project. So I hope you've had an opportunity to, to read this statement of support, but before I sign it, I would like to have input from the council. Is this something that we would be willing to do? At this point, it commits no dollars, it's just a statement of support. So I'll open it up. I think I'll start with Council President Manke, since she's been a part of the discussion that we've had and has some insights. So Kelly.
This statement basically states that these communities and various entities are in support of it. I feel like we probably should go ahead and sign it personally, but I do think everybody needs to be aware that chances are we may be asked to put up some dollars as a part of it in the future. Now, this in no way, as far as I'm concerned, commits us to that, but it is something that will probably come up within the next year or two. So be aware of that. There's no way that it wouldn't enhance our community, but it also comes at a price. So just be aware.
Thank you.
Not this particular letter, but what will happen in the future.
Thank you, Kelly. Any other comments or discussion?
Mayor, go ahead, Adam. I've traveled Phase 1, I'm sure everybody else has here too. It's, it's a, it's a shortcut for sure, saves, you know, 10 minutes. It's nothing that's grandiose, or you're not saving hours of truck time or anything. But with the addition of Phase 2, which is a critical component, that really enhances Phase 1, in my opinion. And to take it from Zappa Rex Hill down to Dundee is a significant improvement. And without Phase 1, there's no Phase 2, so it's, I'm in support of the...
Well put. From my perspective, as I've talked in, in public settings, I see Phase 2 having great impact on Newburgh, because as, as you've seen Springbrook Road and the congestion that that's created, the phase that's really going to enhance McMinnville is Phase 3. That from Dundee to Dayton is where we're going to see tremendous, significant savings of time, and really enhance our economic getting goods to market. But that's a long-term process, and so we deal with what's in front of us at this particular time. Thank you, Alan. Any other comments?
In support of signing this.
Okay. So do I have anyone that would share with me that they're not in support of this? Hearing none, then I'll go ahead and sign this and deliver... Hearing none, then I'll go ahead and sign this and deliver this to the Parkway Committee. I'll reach out to Mr. Hoggleberg tomorrow and let him know. I talked to him last night, and over half of the communities have already signed their statement of support. And he's involved with the other communities this week, as they're going to city councils, tribal council, and the commissioners. So thank you. That takes us this evening to our resolutions. Our first resolution is Resolution 2018-17, a resolution awarding the contract for the 2018 Street Overlay Project 2017-11. So Mike, I'll call on you to update us on this, this resolution for overlay.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll refer you to the brief staff report that's in your packet from Project Manager Roy Markey, as well as the proposed resolution and the project vicinity map that indicates the locations of this year's summer overlay projects. This is the fourth and final year of repaving and repair projects that were included in the 2014 transportation bond package that was voted on and approved by the voters. This covers segments of 23 streets and is expected to be completed by the end of August. The bids were open on March 27th. Publicly read, the low bidder, lowest responsible and responsive bidder was H&amp;H Paving in the amount of $1,021,459.86. So unless there are any questions, staff would recommend that you approve the resolution as presented.
Any questions for Mike?
Go ahead, Alan.
If we, if this does pass, when would, is there a date in here? When you estimated a time of start with the overlays?
That's dependent upon the contractor. We certainly have a period between, over the next few weeks, where we'll be executing contracts and getting bonds and insurance. But the end date for the work is the end of August, so that it's completed before the start of school in the fall.
Of this year.
Of this year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll take a motion for approval of Resolution Number 2018-17.
So moved.
Second.
And it has been moved by Wendy and seconded by Alan. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by saying nay. This resolution passes unanimously. Okay. We now are prepared, under ordinances, to have a second reading of Ordinance Number 5047, which is dealing with the short-term rental and lodging piece. And we'll consider, we'll consider this. And so what I'd like to do before we move down the path is, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on short-term rental and lodging of homes and vacation? Hearing none, then we will now consider the matter of Ordinance Number 5047. Does any counselor object to having the ordinance read by title only? If not, will the city attorney please read the ordinance into the record?
This is the second reading of Ordinance Number 5047, an ordinance amending Title 17 zoning of the McMinnville City Code, specific to multiple chapters to update definitions and the regulation of short-term rentals and lodging establishments in residential and commercial zones.
Thank you. Chuck, would you like to come and present us with where we are on that, so that we can have a final discussion?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counselors. So this is the second reading of the vacation home and what we will be referring to as short-term rental use zoning text amendments. So just for a little brief background, quickly, the Planning Commission discussed this topic during a series of work session discussions, had an opportunity for public comment during one of those. We also completed a lot of research into our current situation in McMinnville and other things that are being done around the state. The Planning Commission held their public hearing in February and had some deliberation and a recommendation to approve some proposed amendments. We brought those to you at your March 12 meeting, and we had some discussion and some additional minor amendments that were discussed and requested for us to look into, which we've done, and I'll walk you through those tonight. So the major amendments, I'm calling them, the bigger changes that are being proposed that aren't changing from the first reading and the last time the city council discussed this in March, those are updating our definitions to the short-term rental use, uses, adopting the spacing standard for short-term rental uses in residential zones, and making some updates to our licensing and renewal and review requirements in residential zones. The proposed amendments would keep the spacing standard and the license and review process. Those would not apply in the commercial zones and allow those uses there, but a little bit stricter policies in the residential areas. Some of the additional proposed amendments that were discussed last month were looking at some of the operational requirements. So the timeframe for short-term rental uses, the types of structures that they're allowed to be used in, and then also a potential change to the license renewal process and whether that can be associated with property ownership. So in terms of timeframe for short-term rental uses, the existing timeframes and the ones that existed for the current uses, the vacation home rentals and the bed and breakfasts, were somewhat inconsistent. One was 21 days, one was seven days. When we were doing our research, it was very common that other communities had a 30-day timeframe on these types of uses. We discussed that last month, and we looked into it a little bit more and found that that's likely based in ORS revised statute language on residential landlord and tenant rights and relationships. Though that chapter and those, those laws exclude certain types of occupancy from that type of situation, the kind of formal rental situation, they define transient occupancy and vacation occupancy. Both of those are 30 and 45 days maximum. The transient occupancy has some additional requirements related to it that might not fit short-term rentals, but the vacation occupancy definitely does.
Hey Chuck, can you define transient occupancy, please?
Off the top of my head, not verbatim, but it was basically, it was in the ORS language. It limited it to 30 days. It had some additional requirements that linen service be provided every certain number of days and that rent be paid for ahead of time. So that might not meet the, you know, operation of most short-term rentals. The vacation occupancy did not have those types of additional descriptions in the ORS definition.
Thank you.
So the proposed amendments that we've presented to you in the updated version of the ordinance and your, that you'll be considering tonight, is to amend the timeframe for short-term rentals and resident occupied short-term rentals, which again, is the rental of rooms within a home, to no more than 30 days for both of those. So that involves amendments to the short-term rental definitions and to the standards that those uses are subject to. It's a consistent timeframe for all uses. It's consistent with what other communities are doing in the region. That 30-day timeframe would cover rental uses that are shorter than, you know, your typical longer-term lease situations, like a month-to-month or a longer-term annual lease. And it would also fall into that ORS definition of vacation occupancy, because it would be beneath the 45-day maximum that that allows for. As far as the use and what types of structures the short-term rentals are allowed in, we had previously been proposing, and this came through the Planning Commission discussion, to allow short-term rentals in single-family homes, common wall, single-family, two-family, which are duplex and accessory dwelling units. There was some discussion about whether duplexes should be allowed to have operated as a short-term rental. So in looking into that, we, based on the council direction, we're proposing to remove duplex from the allowable list of structures that a short-term rental can be used in. There was some conversation last month, and we, you know, agree with that doing that would preserve duplex uses for, you know, more standard rental uses. There can be typically are somewhat lower-cost housing, so preserve more affordable housing options in the city. And that's consistent with the Planning Commission's discussions and their reasoning for not allowing these types of uses in multiple-family dwellings, so in apartment buildings and triplexes and that kind of thing, was, was for that specific reason, to preserve more affordable housing options in the city. So that's the change we're proposing in terms of the uses.
Can I ask a quick question? Common wall, single-family homes?
So, what?
So, as opposed to duplexes?
Right.
Yeah. So common wall, single-family are on their own legal lot, but they share a common wall with the adjoining property. Duplex would be two dwelling units on a single lot.
Oh, okay. So if they have two tax lots?
Correct, yep. They're on their own separate lot, the-
Gotcha.
Resident could own that property, even though it's adjoined to another-
Perfect.
Another unit.
Okay, thanks.
And one more question, Chuck. On the ADUs, they would still be permitted for vacation rentals?
They would. We're proposing to keep that in.
Thank you.
The last amendment from our previous discussion is to make some changes to the licensing process and the requirements for that. The existing process that we have in place requires permitting and a land use application review by the planning department. We're proposing to keep that in for both types of uses. We had previously been making sure that people renewed annually, but we are increasing that language to require that it be renewed annually. If they don't, they become void and they're subject to a new review at that point in time. There was also a discussion at the last city council about whether permits could be associated with property ownership, and as those things change, whether the permits could be, you know, become void in that situation as well. And that would, that was kind of as a means to look into removing some of the non-conforming short-term rentals in terms of the new spacing standard that we'll have in our residential areas. So during the research we had done, there was another community that did do that, and as a license and permit-type process, that, you know, the city attorney had mentioned as, is a, is a way to, to do that. So we're proposing to follow the same type of program, as it was Manzanita that had, had this in their code. Basically, that when someone applies for a short-term rental, that permit gets granted to that owner at that time. And then permits do not transfer with sale or change in ownership of the property. So the new owner would be required to come in and get a, you know, apply again for the short-term rental. They'd be subject to the standards at that point in time. So if it's allowed and they meet the spacing standard, they would likely be granted one. But if not, it may not be a possibility after the ownership changes. We are proposing, and this was the same in Manzanita, to kind of exempt a couple of situations from the change of ownership process. And those would be a transfer of property from a person to a trust, and the same person is involved in the trust, or a transfer of ownership through a will to kind of cover situations that aren't really a change in ownership or are kind of an unwilling change in ownership. So we're proposing to keep that language in. So that's the change we're proposing. It would apply to all properties, all short-term rental uses. We thought it would be easier in terms of management and just fairness to have it apply to all instead of only some that are non-conforming. So that's the change we're proposing related to that conversation. So those are the changes. Staff's recommending the council adopt Ordinance 5047 with those three additional proposed amendments, which were included in your packet and the updated sections of the code that you saw tonight. So happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
So any questions for, for Chuck?
My only question was just to clarify that it is willable or it is transferable to a trust without them losing their license? Correct, it would be. Okay.
Any other questions? Alan?
Couple more. Chuck, is there any situation that you can see in the future that an owner of a property would sublease or subown, sub-ownership to someone coming in, such as a, a company that are experts in vacation rentals, where they would, they would take the, take the ownership position even though they wouldn't have ownership?
I mean, I would say we might have that situation already, and it's similar to long-term rentals, where people might hire a property management company to kind of manage the property for them, but they're still the owner of the underlying property. So I think that situation exists. I don't think it changes the underlying ownership in any way, so, but that, that situation could occur.
And the other one, just to clarify, the, the duration of, is it the 30 and the 45 days? Is that what we're going with? 30 days for transient, 45 days for?
No, just to clarify on that, so the, the transient and the vacation occupancy terms I showed, those are terms in the Oregon Revised Statute Chapter. We will have our short-term rental definition in our code, and we're proposing that both of those be 30 days. And they would both fall under the vacation occupancy definition in the ORS language.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Chuck? Hearing none, let's then have a council discussion. And I'll just open it to the council for discussion. We've had the first reading, this is the second reading.
I feel that the planning, Chuck has been, and his other staff have been very responsive to what we asked for the last go-around. I think they've taken everything very thoughtfully into consideration. I would urge all of us to vote in favor of this.
Okay. Again, once again, I'll ask for any public comment on this, on this, on this ordinance. Okay? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 5047.
Aye, so move.
Second.
It has been, it has been, a motion's been made by Counselor Menke and seconded by Counselor Rudin. I'll ask the city recorder to poll the council.
Counselor Dobkin?
Aye.
Counselor Garvin?
Aye.
Counselor Peralta?
Aye.
Counselor Stassenz?
Aye.
Counselor Rudin?
Aye.
Counselor President Menke?
Aye.
After roll call, Ordinance Number 5047 is adopted in a vote of six to zero. So that passes unanimously. Thank you for working through that. I have been passed a note, and we will take a five-minute break in the, before we get into our next discussion. And so let's have, we'll open back up at 8:15.
Topics. We've got sign-in sheets in the back. In order to make sure we call your name and have your information, so you don't have to sign a sheet when you get up there, please go ahead and sign one of the request to speak forms, give them to our city recorder, Melissa Grace, and she'll make sure he gets up to the front here. Thank you.
Okay, I will call us back to order. We are now ready for the second reading of ordinance number 5049. We will consider this matter. Does any council object to having the ordinance read by title only? Hearing none. I'll have the city attorney read the second reading of ordinance number 5049 by ordinance title.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 5049, an ordinance relating to the parking of recreational vehicles, motor trucks, and abandoned vehicles, amending McMinnville Municipal Code Chapters 10.04, 10.28, and repealing McMinnville Municipal Code Chapter 15.28.
Thank you, David. And we will now call on you to give a presentation to the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So at the first reading on this ordinance, there was some discussion by council requesting a couple of changes be made. One was a recommendation by staff that there be some further work done to the definition of the term recreational vehicle. And so that the changes were made with respect to that definition. And the second item was that we look at providing for a parking permit program for recreational vehicles that would allow residents of the city to, on a short-term basis, park a recreational vehicle in front of property that they own or lease, rent. And so we've incorporated in a, a parking permit program that would allow for a 72-hour parking permit to be issued up to four times per year for a single recreational vehicle, with some provisions related to how close that vehicle needs to be parked to property owned or leased by the applicant of the permit, and indicating a waiting period of 72 hours between the issuance of permits. And so that is what was in your packet presented to you for consideration in terms of the ordinance and changes from the last time this was considered.
Thank you, David. Council discussion, any questions for David? Or I think we could even open it up to Tim, too. But any, any questions, and then we'll go into discussion. Remy?
Well, you know, I certainly can recognize the need for there to be action at this point, given a growing discomfort in our community and problems that have been arising. But my interpretation of this ordinance is that it really accomplishes one thing, and that is that it criminalizes poverty. As I've already reported to this council, we have a program coming at you as fast as we can to provide viable options for those McMinnville residents who have lost their fortunes. At our forum last month, I was attended by Michelle Sam. She may be here tonight. Said I can share her story. She's a born and raised McMinnville resident, as is her husband. They had a house here, kids, dogs. And the market caused them to lose their home. Now they live in their RV. This will do nothing to stabilize their situation. They're still a working family. They work locally. This 72 hours will not be sufficient for them to stabilize their situation. And so I think ordinance like this, if it were to come in conjunction with the other program that we're working on, so that there are options available for those looking to, interested in trying to stabilize, change their situation, then you can, at the same time, give some teeth to address those who are not interested in doing, not interested in doing that. You know, I think that, I think, I think that we have to remember that tonight, everybody in this room stood and recited the Pledge of Allegiance, which, you know, guarantees us liberty and justice for all. And it is not a crime to be poor. And so I cannot, I cannot sign on to, I cannot add my voice to this choir, sign on to this ordinance, not, not at this time and not under this situation. As I said, if, if we're able to bring something back at a time when we have also been able to fully bring you a program that does give some other options, that would be a different story. But, but I'm, I'm just, I cannot do that at this time. I cannot, I cannot tell people that they are not welcome even on our streets because they are poor.
Thank you, Remy, for your thoughtful conversation and comments. Any other discussion from council members? Hearing none at this time. What I would like to do is, a number of you have indicated that you'd like to address the council. I'll remind you that we have a three-minute limit. And Melissa's going to let you know in the three minutes. I'll raise my hand and we will, we'll give you three minutes to be thoughtfully talking about this ordinance. So Mark Davis, if you'd come up and address the council?
Mark Davis, 652 Southeast Washington Street. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I share the concerns that were raised by Councilor Drapkin. I view this ordinance primarily as a housekeeping measure, really. It's the fact that it's not tied in to some solution to the, where the RVs are going to go. I mean, you know, it's, it makes sense. If it'd been the law all along, I don't think we'd be where we are now. But we've got to, I think we should be doing the solution at the same time we're passing the ordinance. And that's where I really feel we're kind of out of step here. It sounds like something's going to happen. I've, you know, seen a couple of presentations that, you know, the council's looked at. I mean, there's ideas going on. But I really feel like, you know, this is a national problem. I mean, you know, we're trying hard to deal with it on a local level. I just don't think, you know, making the, you know, RV parking illegal is somehow going to solve the problem. I, I really think that we need to have something in place that where people can go. And, and, you know, it's, I mean, I'm probably heading off into ideological ground here, but I'm going to go there anyway. I mean, really, we've seen in the last 30 or 40 years in this country, redistribution of wealth. And the people in the bottom are losing out and the people at the top are gaining it. Now we can argue about why that's happening and everything else, but I think it's, it's simply a fact. And I think what people are doing with recreational vehicles is a logical response to the economic situation that they've, they've drifted into. That, you know, they can't afford, you know, the rent. They can't afford to buy a house. And they've made a decision. And I think we need to figure out a way to accommodate that reality. I mean, I wish it weren't that reality. I wish we could all own homes or, or rent nice homes, but, but that isn't, you know, what it's going to be. So somehow we've got to come up with a way to accommodate what we've got going on, the reality we have in the streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Next, we have Michael Burr. Michael, please come up. Welcome.
Thank you. Counsel, thank you for hearing me this evening. I'm Michael Burr, live at 956 Northeast Sampson Street, here in McMinnville. Would note that I'm a member of First Baptist Church and chair the committee that ministers to our exterior congregation, retired minister, and have been dealing with poor and homeless for over 40 years in a number of different situations. As I read this ordinance, I find it deficient on a number of levels. I know that you're trying to solve difficult problems, but this ordinance will make the situation worse, not better. It is too narrowly focused. My recommendation is that you need to work with your homeless task force and the Subcommittee on Vehicular Homelessness, get their recommendations and work, work with YCAP, who's still analyzing the latest homeless count and the numbers of people who are living in vehicles. Get the data first so you know what you're dealing with. The ordinance, as I, I see it, is really dangerous to a number of people that I work with. Single women who live in their cars and it is the only safety that they have, that lock on their doors, the only resource that they have. There's a number of elderly and also children in that same situation. Would recommend that, the only time for this ordinance is, is, is when you have some kind of enforced vehicular camping program like Eugene has. Get that in place first and then work on this ordinance. Don't just throw, throw people out. Number of questions. What do you do with Class B RV vehicles? Some people buy Class Bs, conversion vans, use them not only as vans, but as second vehicles. Do you tow them away because they're parked in front of a house? What do you do with semi-tr, semi-tractors that have sleeping quarters behind them? Some drivers will park their rigs in the front of their house for a week or so, be between long-haul trips. Do you haul, haul those off because they are RVs? How do you define living unit? Is it a sleeping bag in a, in a car? Is it a fully made bed? Is it a mattress rolled up in a, in a closet? What's living quarters? What do you do with visitors during the summer who, who come to visit and park in front of your house and want to stay for a week?
Our three minutes are up, Michael.
I have more. And, and the bottom line is, is that this ordinance, as it's written now, would be a disaster for a number of people and, and would be brutal and, and would exacerbate the homeless situation in our city and would cost a lot of money, that, you know, a lot of unintended consequences.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Anthony Bell? Welcome, Tony.
Yes, I agree with that gentleman, wholeheartedly. I think this is a, a very harsh approach taken by the council for what is basically a non-problem. We have maybe about a dozen RVs that cycle back and forth from behind the YCAP building to behind Wincott. Then why is this such a big problem? This is, there are 10,000 dwellings in McMinnville, so that means about, for every thousand dwellings, there's one RV cycling back. Why is that a problem? The, the reason why people are living in RVs, as the gentleman said, is because they can't afford the rents. Why can't they afford the rents? Well, I'll tell you why. It's because of the huge increase in land prices that have occurred in McMinnville. I'm a real estate developer and a college professor, and I, in the last 30, 40 years, I developed 300 lots here in McMinnville in subdivisions, beginning in the first one on South Davis Street, off of Lithia Way. I paid $18,000 for five acres, $3,600 an acre. And now land prices are well over $100,000. That's a 30-fold increase over that time. During that time, the cost of living nationwide has gone up fourfold. So that means that land prices locally are going up seven times faster than the cost of living. Since the 1980s, the median wage in the United States has gone up essentially no faster than the cost of living or just a little bit more. So that means that the land prices in McMinnville are going up six times faster than wages. And now you can see this, how this manifests itself in rents. In the rents at the end of Lafayette Avenue, behind the Safeway, there are three-story walk-up for two-bedroom units, less than 1,000 square feet, $1,200 a month. That's an incredible rent now for people. And in my, in the case of my rentals that I have, I've just raised the rent from one after people moved out, from 1,000 to 1,300, and 1,500 square feet, three bedrooms, two baths, double car garage. So they're So they're quite a bit bigger than the ones down there on Lafayette Avenue. But this is the problem. There's huge increase in land prices that are confined to McMinnville, and also, it's fairly typical on the West Coast. It isn't true in the center of the U.S. or in Texas, where land prices have not gone ahead like this and where property prices have not gone through the roof as they have here locally. So what we're doing here is we're penalizing people who are trying to keep body and soul together, keep the rain off their families. There's one with five children. Keep the rain off their selves, keep the wind off of themselves to stay alive, and we're proposing to brutalize them by these terrible penalties that we're going to impose upon them. And I think it's a shameful event if we go ahead and do that. So I would say follow through on the proposals from the, that were given to the council by the church from Eugene.
Thank you, Tony. Jared Miller.
I think I already spoke. I don't really have a lot of relevance, but I'll speak again. That was something earlier when I asked.
Okay, that's fine. You just had put a number of topics down.
Yeah, I did. I have even a longer one back there, but three minutes is all we can ask. But, no, I mean, I've just, I've been, being personally, I've been around and seen a lot of the RVs happening since Murky's got an eviction notice, which was, I don't know, four years ago now. And that was in light of the approval of the landfill expansion, which you ran that to the ground, approving that, much like this Dunway or Dundee bypass. But, I mean, we're the city of McMinnville, inside of the county of Yam Hill, and I thought that's the way we ran. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jared. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I put together a statement, if you don't mind. I'd just like to read it in whole, and I'll make sure to keep it under the three minutes. So, you know, first off, I just want to thank the council tonight for their time. I'm looking forward to this evening's agenda and the discussion that we're going to be having. As a neighborhood, but also as representation of the thousands of homeowners and residents that are in this city, that have been looking forward to this evening and will hopefully bring to a close an end resolution to address the vehicular camping that has become more evident in our city streets, neighborhoods, and the overall community. We first started this conversation as individuals from a specific neighborhood at the first of the year, four months ago. Over the past four months, we have watched, supported, engaged with, and encouraged the council to continue forward progress on this matter in a way that would be best for the city of McMinnville, but also give our police force the tools necessary to enforce it. In the research of the police department, Captain Simons, Chief Scales, we saw that surrounding cities and communities have recognized these issues and made proper adjustments to their ordinances to effectively address and enforce the vehicular camping and abandoned-vehicle problems. Now is our time to join that same approach. As I stated when I first came before all of you in January, I said that this is going to be a continually growing problem that will build and grow around us if we allow it. I remind the council again that this continues to become a larger issue as days progress and will continue to as time goes on. Many of you as council members have made those same comments in previous meetings that we have discussed. I think it is important to remind the council of how those opposed to these ordinances and amendments feel. Quoted from a radio interview last week, that you are terrorists and it's terrorism that we are putting upon you, what the city council is doing is smoke and mirrors across the board, and that they, as vehicular campers, have a right to do what they are doing and be left alone. I think we know at this point that that is not the case and that the process and need for this in our city has been transparent, well-researched, and thought out to make the right decision encompassed in proposed ordinances before you this evening. In closing, again, I want to thank the council members for their energy and efforts in this matter, the McMinnville Police Department, that has put at this point many hours of time, energy, and effort. I look forward to us moving forward on this amendment tonight, taking the right steps in keeping McMinnville a great place to work, live, and call home. Thank you.
Thank you, Griffin. We have Joe Wall. Joe, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask that we respect the opinions of all speakers and refrain from outbursts, clapping, or booing that might be seen as disrespectful to speakers or people with other opinions in the room. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
My name is Joe Wall. Thank you, council, for giving us this opportunity to express our opinions freely.
Absolutely.
I live at 2943 Hidden Meadow Drive. That's the area around Duran that there's been so much discourse about. I want to first say that at one time in my life, I was poor. When my daughter was born in 1973, I was making $1.85 an hour as a tree trimmer in the Northeast. I worked in that field for 11 years, six of which I worked my way through school. But as a poorer person, supporting a family of four, I lived where I could afford to live. So I am sensitive to the plight of people who can't afford a place to rent in McMinnville. But I would ask, is there no other place around here with more reasonable rents? I'd also say that I worked long and hard to buy the house that I bought on Hidden Meadow Drive. And I'm sorry to say this, but approaching the neighborhood and seeing RVs and trucks that you can't tell whether they're abandoned or not and people's trash does not give a favorable impression of the neighborhood. Now, I put some of my life savings into that house. It's an investment. And I bought that house because I expected that investment to appreciate in value. So I've got both ends of the spectrum here. I understand people's needs, but I also understand my needs and my neighbors' needs. And I think that the council should address the issue long-term. I don't think that you need to flange the two issues together. You can address one right now, the one that you're considering, and then the issue where these people can locate safely as a separate issue. I don't think they need to be connected. I think that by connecting them, you're just, it's dragging the process out, and the process is affecting taxpayers. So, I mean, that's really what I have to say. I mean, it's, you know, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Joe.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, I don't have a big speech to give you guys. I do thank those of you that have a heart and have put forth actions with your efforts and your words, and even for those that haven't, because it shows who you really are and where your heart's really at. There was a word of terrorism, economic terrorism. I don't think I have the only word to use that, but that's what it is when it comes down to it. You know, when it comes down to it, in a republic, everybody stands up to the republic for which it stands, right? One nation under God, to the republic. But the republic's there to protect the minority. It's one of those systems where there's a constitution or a charter in place, and there's people that are supposed to take oaths, and they're supposed to abide by those oaths. Okay? And that protection, you see, in a full-on democracy, the majority can take over the minority or the people that they don't want and push them out. And in a democracy, that, a full-on democracy, that can happen. In a republic, it's not supposed to. By definition, it's not supposed to. That's not how it's supposed to work. Okay? As has been said, there's a minority, a small group of RV dwellers or homeless people in McMinnville, and a majority that don't want them. When the idea is to make it harder on them before summer through economic terrorism, I mean, you know, it bothers them, you know, whether people like the verbiage or not. I'm allowed to use it. I can use that. And I'd also like to just make another comment. As David's allowed to ask people not to do things, that's just it. Again, this is a republic. He can ask. If somebody has an opinion, they can voice it. It's not disorderly if there's communicative purpose. And I could give people the legal side if they needed to, if they got in trouble for doing it in here. I really hope that people start remembering that. You guys, there's oaths that you're bound by, that you're supposed to be upholding, that are protected people, to protect the people. It's not about glad-handing and acting like you're doing it. And I said "smoke and mirrors" because that's what it looks like when there's people sitting at one side of the table saying, "We have to go call-by-call, and it's costing money." While somebody on the same, or within those committees, I should say, is at the other side of the table, saying it's a problem that needs to be dealt with right away. Okay? But that guy's calling that guy. And you can, I mean, like I said, I've got the evidence. One guy's calling the other guy. It's like one guy's lining the other guy's pockets. One guy's making the report to bring in the evidence, to bring in the next guy, going back and forth. I don't really have much more to say than anybody else hasn't said. But thank you for your time. Blessings.
Thank you, Jake. Welcome.
First of all, I would like to say I've been employed in McMinnville for the last five years. I pay my taxes. I also live in an RV, because, as it's been spoken, there, it just isn't an affordable rent in McMinnville or surrounding areas. Like I said, I've been employed for five years at the same place. I think a lot of this has been set upon lies. People coming in and saying, "Oh, the RVers are making garbage, they're doing this. There hasn't been an RV over on Duran Drive for months, for months and months. There's nobody over there." In fact, when the city enforcer came over there, she recommended cutting all the blackberry bushes back, because it looked like garbage before we got over there. So she cleaned it all up, and we picked up all the trash, because that's what we do. So a lot of this has been set on complete slander on this group of people, that they're drug abusers, possibly sex offenders, we're worried he's got a gun, we're worried about the, all of this is based on lies. And that's really concerning, because everything I've said is based on truth. I'm pretty visible. I'm on the street. You can see exactly how I live, what I do, how kind of, what kind of mother I am to my kids, what kind of employee I am, you know? But constantly, we've had people come in from one neighborhood saying that we're doing all these things when there's nobody even over there anymore, there hasn't been for months. This problem is, it is an issue. It's, this is an economic issue, and it needs to be worked with, with ethics and morals and values, not with laws, because this can actually cause more legal ramifications for everybody. And I don't want to go through that. I've got kids to raise. I've got a job to work. I have a family. But I'm telling you, I'm prepared for it. And I'm also prepared to educate all of the homeless people that can't come in here because they're disabled. Doing this can actually cause death to people. There are people that have oxygen tanks, that need their RVs. That's how they live. This is a matter of life and death. It's cruel and unusual punishment to take away somebody's home because somebody feels entitled because they bought a house. Well, I'm sorry, but property values aren't going down because of an RV sitting beside, you know, an industrial area. It's not happening. You could see the proof. You can, everything, you can see it in the numbers. So, you know, coming in here and saying, "Oh, my property values are going down, they're making trash," it's all baloney. And this is, this is heartless.
Thank you, Valerie. Okay. That concludes our public comment, so I will now turn to the council for further discussion if needed. Anyone like to have a discussion among ourselves at the dais? Go ahead, Alan.
We'll definitely have a discussion. I think we need a big discussion of a very difficult subject. Remy made the point of, and she's working very hard on this, and I join her on this, of creating some way to create a parking area, a living area for these type vehicles. It hasn't gone, it hasn't gone well. They don't really have the support from the community as a whole to accomplish it. So I'd recommend that we move forward quickly, more quickly than we are doing, and get an area designated where these campers can go and feel safe and accomplish and live their lives like they'd like to. So in that respect, I think we need to move forward on that. Also, I would recommend that a comprehensive look at the paying of fines and towing of vehicles be looked at, not just for the recreational camp, the campers, but for those who don't pay their parking and speed fines, so that it's more comprehensive over to a large group of people, not just targeting one specific group. So, and those two things, I'm, pretty clear to me on those. But, and, but the testimonies of both the neighborhoods and the campers are compelling, and I was particularly impressed by a couple of the campers' testimonies last time of their needs. So it's a tough one, for me at least, to come up with something that's workable for the community. I agree with one of the statements that was made, that the population of the vehicular campers will increase through the years if we permit it. There's no question in my mind that that will happen. On the other hand, you're looking at poor. You know, what do we do about that? We do have compassion. We do have heart. We do have empathy, in spite of what's been said by some of the people and their testimonies. So we look at that. We want people to improve their lives. That's the main thing. And not impose their will upon other people. So I'm very much open on this. I feel an ordinance needs to take place. I need, I think it needs to have some teeth for enforcement, and so, but there's, it's a tough, tough one.
Thank you, Alan. Any further discussion? Wendy?
I would have to agree with Alan. I feel like it's imperative that we take action, the way it has, where our responsibility to the citizens of McMinnville are to address how this reality that we face fits within our community, and we have a responsibility to do that. But I definitely hear and am thankful for the testimony from the campers with regards to the impact on them, and I think it's also imperative that we address, we don't have our head in the sand, and we address that there are some, we need to solve the whole problem, and this ordinance doesn't do that. Now, what the next step would be for us, considering that, I don't, it's a tough one. I don't really, yet, but I see the complexity of the issue, and I feel compassion for the owners of property that are struggling with this. And this isn't the right manifestation of this in our community. It's very clear. But we have to really be thoughtful about how we proceed, so.
Thank you, Wendy. Any further discussion?
Adam.
Adam?
I'd just like to say, Remy, I do hear you loud and clear on, you know, finding a solution to this as well. But I would like to echo a lot of what Alan said, and that something does need to be done. And just because we're looking at some enforcement option doesn't mean that we lack empathy or compassion for the hard times some people face. doesn't mean that we lack empathy or compassion for the hard times some people face. I would be in support of something similar to what Eugene has going. That's why I did come to that Monday presentation that you put together with staff. I think that is a very good possible solution to, to what we could be looking at as a community going forward. If we can get the partners on board to, to pull it off. I do believe that it's not something the city takes on by itself. It has to have partnerships. And it has to have good partnerships that it doesn't just fall back on the city's shoulders solely. But if those things could be put in place, I would be in support of that solution moving forward. But that being said, this isn't just a Dorn Drive and Riverside Drive vehicular camping ordinance. This is a citywide issue. I get emails from Meadows Drive. I've seen abandoned vehicles, boats, trailers moved throughout the city over the years. When I was a seventeen-year-old kid that fixed cars on the side, I used to push cars around the block so I wouldn't get them towed. It's a very dated ordinance. Like Mark said, it's typically would be a housekeeping ordinance if we didn't have the, the RV camping aspect of it currently to the level that it is. I don't see any need to fuse the two together. And I would like to look at the, the fee structure and the possibility of, of booting things as a comprehensive approach to everything in the city down the road. But I'm happy with the way the ordinance is written right now and, and to take a vote on it tonight.
Do you mind if I respond? Do you mind if I just respond?
Go ahead, yeah.
Just on your point, Adam, of, of tying the two together. And I think it's important to, to note that the reason that I think it's so important to tie the, the two things together right now is that because this, this did not come up as a regular housekeeping item. This came up in response to people living in their RVs on our city streets. So, so it ceased to be regular housekeeping at that point. And it's one of multiple responses. Only this one is a simpler and more narrowly focused response as opposed to the other response that's happening simultaneously and has actually been in process for a lot longer than this subject has, has been at hand. And so while this was, this was a much easier thing to do, to, to refine this, it is targeting a problem. It is not a general housekeeping item at this point. And we are working on good community, community engagement. And we do have community buy-in, not as much as we would like, but we have a lot. We, and we're being very diligent to make sure that this program isn't going to be something that comes back and falls on the city's shoulders. We're vetting the nonprofit that has pledged to run the program for the city. We are asking at every single meeting for assistance from the community with site selection. We have partners in recology. We have other community partners as well pledging sanitation services. So I, I just want to, I, I want to say that because the, the two are tied. They have been, they have been the entire time, really. Or this is, this is, this is happening parallel, but it's happening for the same reason.
Thank you, Remy. Sal?
I'm conflicted about, I think as, excuse me, as all of us are. I think I'm really conflicted about this statute, statute. I've, I've had different feelings about it throughout this one meeting, let alone throughout the last several months. And I've spent a lot of time trying to work towards solutions to address this problem. In hearing the testimony that we've heard since I've been on the council, I am persuaded that we need as a city to have an enforceable city code with respect to not only RV camping, but camping in, like, we need a camping ordinance, we need an RV ordinance. We need laws that address this in a significant way. Because when you get large aggregations of people camping together, ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty cars, even despite people's best intentions to clean up after themselves and try and deal with human waste and trash and everything else, it still has an impact on the neighborhoods. I mean, I've been to Doran Drive. I've been to, to Mack Water and Light where people are parking now. And I've, I've, I've been to YCAP. And I think as a city council, one of the challenges is that some of our community partners that we would be calling on, including YCAP, are directly impacted by the car camping and would like people, would like this council to take action to prevent large aggregations of people camping in the right of way. And it puts us in a, a difficult situation. So there is a public health and public safety issue. By the same token, there are a large number of people who are in our city who are doing this in response to a real economic need. And I'm not convinced, whatever the vote is either way tonight, that we're going to be taking the right course of action. It's one of those things that there are just competing interests of people who are, one group of people who are, are vulnerable people, who I feel a lot of empathy for, and another group of people who are heavily impacted by the camping of that population coming into and out of their neighborhood. I'm not sure what the right course of action is.
Thank you, Sal. Kelly?
I was impressed with the testimony tonight. In all honesty, I sided with the homeowners, at least throughout this. But I, I think you should know that I've been out talking to people. I've talked to our priest. I've talked to churches. I've talked to the landowners that own the property that you're parking next to. And some of them are even amenable to possibly allowing some RV camping on their sites. The issue is it's going to take a little bit longer than the possibility of this ordinance tonight. I feel this ordinance is necessary tonight personally. But I see some change in the offing that will allow you someplace to go. And I, I want that for you. I sympathize with you greatly. But I feel like at this point in time, this, this is a serious public safety and public health issue. So I was pleased at the homeless meeting this last week to see that we're finally to the point where we're going to maybe pull this out and start looking at it as, as council and get this RV camping such that we can get some sites for people to go to. Now, it's not going to be a huge effort. It took, there's sixty sites in Eugene and it took them twenty-some years, almost thirty years to do it. So it's not going to be something that happens overnight. You just have to be aware of that. It has a lot to do with the bigness of people's hearts. There were a number of business people that talked tonight. My question is, you know, are you willing to provide an RV site? I, I think you need to think about if you're going to come up and talk for it. I have quite honestly asked the people involved if, over and off of Riverside Drive, if they would provide a site. And they're both kind of thinking it over. So I, as much as I would like to make this all happen tonight, I really would, I feel like this ordinance is necessary at this time and I personally will vote for it.
Okay, council, thank you for your thoughtful discussions and thoughts and the respect that we've had for, for one another and the issues at hand. Any other comments? If not, I will ask for a motion to pass ordinance number fifty-fifty to a second reading.
I so move.
Second.
This is the second reading.
Okay. We need to pass ordinance to take it to a second reading. And then you'll do that down there.
This, this was the, this is the second reading, sorry.
Okay.
I think you're on the wrong one, sorry.
This is fifty-fifty.
You're up here.
Isn't it fifty-fifty?
This is fifty-forty-nine.
Okay. Okay, excuse me. I am. Okay. It has been moved by Council President Minkie and seconded by, let's see.
Why don't you, why don't you ask, ask for the motion again?
Okay. I'll ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number fifty-forty-nine, not fifty-fifty, fifty-forty-nine.
I so move.
And a second?
Second or whatever.
Okay. It's been moved by Council President Minkie and seconded by Councilor Rudin. I will ask the city recorder to poll the council.
Councilor Dropkin?
Nay.
Councilor Garvin?
Aye.
Councilor Peralta?
Aye.
Councilor Rudin?
Aye.
Councilor Stassenz?
Aye.
Council President Minkie?
Aye.
Ordinance number fifty-forty-nine is adopted by a vote of five to one. Thank you. Okay. Our next ordinance is where I was jumping to before, is fifty-fifty. And we will consider the matter of ordinance number fifty-fifty. Does any council object to having the ordinance read by title only? If not, I will have the city attorney please read the ordinance into record.
This is the first reading of ordinance number fifty, five-zero-five-zero, an ordinance relating to the definition of plastic bags, amending McMinnville Municipal Code, Chapter 5.36.
Okay. Do we need further discussion? We've talked about it, but David, anything else that you would have to present to us that you didn't earlier in our work session?
No.
Okay. Any discussion among council members? Adam?
I would like to add a third amendment to that. And that would be, or revoke, or I don't know what, what you would term it. But I would like to remove in our ordinance the mandate that a, that a, a store charges for the paper bag and put that in the store's seat. So if they want to charge for it, they can charge for it. If they don't want to charge for it, they don't need to charge for it. But I just, being in line behind people and hearing a ten or eleven dollar an hour employee getting berated about a bag that somebody's getting charged five or ten cents for, I mean, for me personally, if I forget my stuff, I pay for the bag, it's a reminder. But I just, the amount of times I've seen it, I, I just think that if a store wants to charge for it, let them charge for it and let that employee decide if they want to work there for it. But I just don't feel that it's our job as a government municipality to enforce that and impose that on the, the store or our citizens. Let the store decide.
Thank, thank you, Adam. Any other discussion on any aspect of ordinance fifty-fifty?
I think Adam makes a good point. And I brought that up a little bit earlier, this week. I didn't have a bag. She gave me the bag-free paper bag. So that was her option. And so I, I'd like to see the language that's in there that says the five or ten cents. I was unaware of that.
So I, I can address that. The, the, the ordinance does require, except in the case of stores with fewer than ten employees, that they, the, the stores with more than ten employees are required under the ordinance to charge five cents for providing recyclable bags, paper bags, for example. Stores with fewer than five, or fewer than ten employees, ten or fewer employees have the option of doing it. The discussion, as I recall, was from Zero Waste, had something to do with a concern that, that larger big box retailers could more easily absorb the cost of the more expensive paper bags than the smaller stores. And so by requiring a five cent charge, you weren't disadvant, disavantaging the smaller stores that needed that five cents to, to recover the cost of providing those bags. I don't know that we saw any data on that. We certainly didn't have any testimony during that whole process from any store owners about anything. But that, that's just, I, I provide that simply as my recollection of the background of that discussion.
I just wondered, is it, is it a big point now that we've, we're into this, this far? We've seen how things are going and...
How difficult would it be to change?
It, it wouldn't be difficult. I, I could, I could, if that's the council's desire, I could make those changes and bring this back for a second reading at your next meeting with, changing, if I'm hearing this correctly from the two councillors that have spoken so far, changing the must to a may.
Yeah.
Giving them, giving the store another discretion of whether or not to charge that five cents.
Yeah.
Any other discussion in that direction?
I'd be favorable to that as well.
Okay, Sal? Okay. So we've got, we've got a, we've got four now that have asked us. So again, we'll ask staff to come back and to change that language that it is must, that it's up, it's at their discretion to charge the five cents per bag. Okay? That takes us to, again, we've had our reports from committees. I'm just going to run around to the department heads. And Tim, anything from the police department? Thank you. Heather? Melissa? David? And Jeff, any?
Mayor members of the council, a couple, a couple of things quickly. At the last work session regarding the strategic plan, Brian Scott talked about convening work groups around each of the seven strategic initiatives, developing goals and measurable outcomes and bringing those back later in the process. There's one slight change to that. The, there are two of the strategic initiatives related to economic development, economic prosperity and growth and development. And rather than convene work groups around those two initiatives, Brian and Gabriel are going to bundle up everything that they have created. We're going to turn that over to the consultant team that's working on economic development strategy and have a single path for those economic strategies to work through. And all that information will come together later this spring. Reminder that next Wednesday, you do have a work session scheduled on the eighteenth. It will be a joint meeting with the Board of McMinnville Water and Light. It will be in this room. We'll have a variety of items to talk with you about. We're bringing Carol Samuels down from Piper Jaffrey to talk specifically about PERS and the latest as it exists with PERS, what we know and what we don't know. And we'll also have brief presentations on a series of partnership projects that are underway between Water and Light and the city. And then finally, I'll just bring to your attention, there's a small pamphlet at each of your places. It's called Good to Great. The social sector, every once in a while, you'll hear me mumble things, sometimes maybe a little more clearly than others, about Jim Collins and his work. This is an annex to his book, Good to Great, that applies to the public and nonprofit sectors. And so we've provided that to you for your reading pleasure. It's a quick read. It's only about thirty pages. We encourage you to do that. And maybe there'll be an opportunity for the council to discuss what they've learned at some future point. That's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you, Jeff. And in closing, councillors, thank you for weeks and weeks of, of study and learning and being able to, to sort through some difficult issues this evening. I think we were very respectful. I think we listened. I think we had learnings even tonight. And I'm glad that we had an opportunity to have those public comments because I think it will spur us to get a little more going on the parking situation. And we may have to, as a council, step up and, and go out and see if we can find some partners. I think it's a consolidated effort that we need to do to move forward. But again, thank you for your efforts and the way that we conducted ourselves tonight. I think that was very appropriate. So with that being said, we'll go ahead and close our meeting. So with that being said, we'll go ahead and close our meeting.